Uh, let your phone please stand to the first. I proudly introduce the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with no reason to injustice for all.
Raise your right hand and repeat that with me. I Sandra Wendell.
I Sandra Wendell.
Duesomely swear.
Duesomely swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the state of Oregon.
Of the state of Oregon.
And all local ordinances.
And all local ordinances.
Of the town of Lakeview.
Of the town of Lakeview.
And that I will faithfully and harmfully discharge.
And I will faithfully and harmfully discharge.
Myself in the office of town council.
Myself in the office of town council.
To which I have been chosen.
To which I have been chosen.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Some bad reasons. Do you have a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'd like to make a motion adopt the agenda from last week, two weeks. This is, oh, this is, this one right here.
Yeah.
All second.
Perfect.
Motion made in seconds, go to favor.
Aye.
Aye. Motion to adopt the consent agenda. Motion made in seconds, on the favor.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, can we move on down to public comment? Citizens may address the council on items on the agenda or not on the agenda. Respect for the council and others in attendance, please limit your comments to three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record. Any public comment?
My name is Chris Benetti, I'm one of the directors of Lakeview Road Association. Address, three fifty South A Street. I am here asking the town if we can use their hundred amp three-phase portable generator again this year for the round. It's going on for the video board. We used it last year, it was a great addition. It adds a lot of stuff, we're upgrading everything with the concert and rodeo and the PRCA or on the cowboy channel TV. And so we're really promoting Lakeview and Lakeview's name and we're hoping that we could use that generator from the town again. That's.
I didn't even know that you borrowed it, but apparently you. You talked to Jeff and you bought it from him.
Well, that's why I'm here and I wanted to be there officially to make sure everything's alright and it'd be okay for everybody because that would be fantastic.
Well, I read this, I thought, wait a minute.
Yeah, we need to start doing that.
Oh, yeah, I guess.
You guys, I don't think have to vote on it if you don't want to, Michelle has the authority to do it, you guys just could give her consent.
I don't have time.
Consent says that you're good with that.
Talk to Jeff about it.
Yeah, go for it.
Is it okay then? Yeah.
Yeah.
See your golden.
I thought you were gonna go, I would like, I would like to have it from Tuesday to Tuesday, just a week long, I know it's a little early prior to that, but I would just love to have it to set it up, I'm kind of a planner and like that things.
Perfect. Do you know anybody that's gonna wire it or anything?
Don't have a clue.
Okay.
You know what I'm really good at, church and that.
Don't have a clue.
All, all clues are hooked up, that's.
Okay, perfect, thank you guys very much.
Thanks.
Okay. Can we move on down?
Mayor Ray. Mayor Ray.
Oh, go ahead.
I just, I'm Ginger Casto, I'm a citizen, I'm also the executive director of the Lakeview Community Partnership and I am on the agenda, but I wanted to excuse myself tonight. I had intended to have a conversation with you folks about the planning, the downtown planning process that LCP is helping facilitate with SCOED. But we canceled our meetings because of the fire last week and this week and rescheduled them for the middle of September and you'll be getting information about what those dates are and the different meetings that we're having. We would like to, we being the SCOED and the consultants that are working on the project, would like to schedule either a work session or a time on your agenda the first of September after rodeo is over and everything, so that we can do about a thirty-minute presentation. And we'll have a consultant that is working on the TIF feasibility study and also our consultant that's working on the economic development portion of the project. So I just wanted to let you know that that's going on and hopefully we can get on the books the first of September.
Do we, do we have a workday plan for September yet?
No, we don't.
Not a work session.
Not a work session yet.
That's, yeah, that's up to you, that was just a suggestion, whatever you would like to do.
Yeah, we've got, we've got some time.
I would suggest council maybe make a motion at the table, the agenda item that we need to kind of move it and then we'll reset over a different date if that's the council's pleasure.
Well, work session is a cheat date. It's gonna take longer because we've already got plenty on the first one. We've got several items.
So our intent, our hope is to have the conversation with you prior to the middle of September when the community engagement meetings are scheduled.
Okay, more.
I can get with Ginger and Skidmore.
The council meeting is set for fourteenth through twenty-eighth, I got it on the wrong dates here.
Well, we'll have Dawn get with Ginger.
Yeah, we'll, we'll figure it out.
Yeah, work with Dawn on that.
Or the end of, the end of August is okay too, however it works out.
Yeah, work, work with Dawn on that and we'll get you back on the, on the agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
So we need to say what we.
Anybody else? Yeah, just take one.
Kevin Winter, one zero four three South Fourth Street. I know Jeff Marshall's not here, so I don't know if you want me to wait until he's here, but I am a bit concerned that at the intersection of South Fourth and South G, the street, the stop sign that's on the south end on South G is kind of covered by a tree and there have been times where people have not seen it and I've almost been T-boned because there's no south stop sign on South Fourth through that intersection. So I don't know if there's anything Public Works can do to kind of trim the tree back because there's a few times I've driven on South G and I don't see the stop sign until the last second.
South G and what?
Fourth. And it's a stop sign on the south side.
He trimmed a bunch of them around the schools.
Yeah.
The other day, so I think he's in the mode of doing that, but he just probably needs to have the address.
Yeah, and it's the south, it's the stop sign on the south side of the intersection.
So it's South Fourth and South G?
Yeah, at that intersection.
It's on the east side.
Well, it's the one covered by the tree.
It's the one covered by the tree, so if you're heading, if you're heading west on South Fourth, it's gonna be on this, on your left-hand side.
I got it, I know which one you're talking about.
I'm just a bit concerned about three or four times over the past couple of weeks, I've almost been T-boned by people not seeing that stop sign.
Yeah, and people need to slow down.
Well, that too, but you know. Thank you.
So Dawn, you gonna call or follow?
Oh, I'll take care of it.
Oh, okay.
No worries, I got you back.
Shannon was saying something, I'm hurrying.
What, Shannon?
Kevin, can you hear me?
Yeah, I said there's somebody also parked the horse trailer right on that corner and has obstructed that stop sign more than once.
Okay, I'll take care of that too. Because I think I know who this is.
Okay. Let's move to old business, Northwater Extension. Michelle and I met with, with Scott Mobley and he has concerns that right now, he can't even find fittings for that.
Well, I think where we are with that is as we work towards getting this project done and I like to talk about, the council wants to get it done, but I think that it's gonna be eight to twelve months before we can get it off the ground with the financing, finding pipe, having the plans reviewed and getting back out to bed.
Even if we had the financing, we still wouldn't be able to get parts.
Well, you can't get parts and we gotta get, we need to have the, the plans reviewed before we start, anytime to go back and make sure that we have all of our ducks in a row. So that's kind of where we're at with things. We're looking at letting just the water out there like we talked about last council meeting. I talked to Jeff Marshall about it. The problem with doing that is we cannot annex, if we run just water, we have to have water and sewer to be able to annex it. And that annexing out there is how we were gonna recruit some of the cost and be able to service the loan, so that's.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
How long they can't tie into the cemetery, they're right there. They have city water.
It's a good question.
Just thought.
That, that's what the plan is. The sign.
To tie into the cementine?
Yeah, three thousand feet.
Okay, I didn't realize that was the whole plan, I didn't see that part in some.
There's a hydrant right there at the cemetery, that's, that's where the water's coming from.
Oh, okay.
So this is, let me do some more research.
It, it's somewhere around that intersection is where the water goes and tees in there.
Because that piping runs all the way to the end. And that's not, it shouldn't be that far from Greg's property. They should be able to tie into those lines.
Which property are you talking about?
Talking about the cemetery, the last part of the cemetery, right at the edge.
Michelle, do you have a set of plans for this project?
I can get the plans for the cemetery.
Well, I need those and I need a set of plans for, for your project, which I've asked for several times and did not get it. So if you can give me a set of plans and Greg, I will look at that and we'll see.
Yeah, could we, I, I'd love to clarify, it's the first, it feels like continued roadblocks. Last, last meeting, Ray, you said it'd be a year to get pipe.
We're still not.
Fair enough, I, after the last meeting, I made, I made one phone call that night and I get you pipe in September. So if you want pipe, you can get pipe within thirty days. It, it is not a problem to get pipe. So that's just a choice, if you want to push it out for twelve months, you can, but you can also get it September if you'd like.
Can I ask where you?
I can absolutely help you with, with my pipe.
Can you get your contact information on?
Absolutely, yeah.
Because what we're being told is we're twelve months out on pipe, that's what we're being told.
And that's a great way to manage projects. If I'm a contractor and I, and I'm booked and I, and I need to manage projects, let's push this one out of here. That keeps my, that keeps my work queue loaded, okay?
I, I get that.
So there needs to be some accountability there. And so, back to the funding portion of it, because let's cross that hurdle first. It's my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, but we've got commissioners willing to fund this right now for some bridge gap financing, is that not accurate or?
That is accurate and we're looking into that.
And, and so is there?
We're talking to our attorney to see what the legalities of that is and how we need to pursue that.
Because what I heard you say Scott was eight to twelve months to get financing and get materials. I, I know that's not the case on materials, so it must be eight to twelve months on the financing.
I'm, I'm going by what I'm told on materials, so if you can get me your contact information on materials, we'll be more than happy to contact them and if we can expedite this, we'll look.
Is there resistance to getting funding through the commissioners, is that a problem or?
We're looking into the legalities of that to make sure that it's.
Mr. Headland, do you have any comment on that or?
That's something that I'm more talk about publicly.
I'm sorry, what was that?
That's not something I'm gonna talk about publicly, it's something I'm discussing with my client, so I can't, it's not something that I can, I'm not gonna talk about.
Okay, if you get, if you get him all that information, which if we can't push this quicker, which I don't know how, because right now we're still looking for more funding. We've got, we've got some of it.
You said in your last meeting too, Ray, that you had alternative, an alternative way to go and if you want to head that direction, you're more than welcome to do that.
And I understand that, but understand in doing that, as I said in the last meeting, that I have interests beyond our project as well. And by us going our own direction, it kills the northern project and I'd rather not do that. I'd love to see this go through, from, from a community standpoint, I think there's a lot of value to have city sewer and water out there. If we go our own route, it makes, it makes it a lot tougher for that project to become real. And, and so, we can certainly do that, I see that as the last option. It makes a whole lot more sense to, to get the project done through the town.
It definitely does and that's what we're trying to do. And, and I'm telling you, what, what you're seeing and what you're hearing is completely different on materials from what we're being told. So we're going by the information that is given to us and that's what we're moving forward on. If you want to give us that information, I'll be more than happy to contact the supplier, talk to them about price and availability.
Who would you like me to contact on that? Because the day after the last meeting, I did contact someone here in this, in this room. So do you want me to call you direct, Scott?
You can call me direct.
I will do that.
And I will move forward with this and we'll see what we can do about getting it done.
Now, I also heard something about it's gotta go back through a plan review and get rebid, is that accurate? It's gotta.
It's gonna have to, yeah, because of Michelle, we pulled the bid, so it has to go back through to the public works project. It has to go back to be rebid.
And does funding have to be in place before something gets redid?
Well, it should be. I don't know the legalities of that, I can't answer that question a hundred percent, but it's not fair to the contractor to put a job out for bid and then pull up the last funding.
Now, that's what happened the first time.
No, it was overbid. We had funding for it and then when it came in at one point two, it said a seven hundred and fifty.
It was seven hundred and fifty thousand the first time.
I understand that.
So it was pulled because it was way over cost.
I will go to work to get you guys pipe and fittings, I will get together with the commissioners to help on bridge funding and I'll go to work on it.
There, there's not an issue with the money from the commissioners, the issue is what are the legalities? Because the town wants to do this correctly where we don't get in trouble down the road for taking money from the commissioners, that's not the issue. The issue is making sure that it's being done properly. There's been so many mistakes over the years made in this town that it's cost us a ton of money and we just want to make sure that it's being done correctly.
And I certainly would never be in favor of you doing something illegal.
Dawn, I'm not, I'm not saying you're in that at all, Ray, I'm just telling them.
And I understand.
I'm telling the commissioners, no, we don't want their money, we're not saying that at all. What we're telling you is we need to make sure that the transfer of funds is done correctly. So five years from now or two years from now, when we get audited, we don't have an issue.
I think that's pretty baseline, who wouldn't want it to be done correctly? I, I think everybody would be on board with that. But understand, when I sit here and hear you say eight to twelve months to get that done and get pipe, I have a problem with that, I think it could be done quicker.
There again, I will go back to the same answer I had with that before. We are going by what we were told on materials, that is eight to twelve months out.
Then it's your responsibility to hold those people accountable, I'd do some homework, it took me one phone call, literally at the last, at the last meeting, at the last meeting, at the last meeting within an hour, I had someone on the phone and I'd get you pipe. That took me no effort, it, it shows me the effort that's been put in on your side.
We're, we're going by what the contractor that did the job told us.
I hold them accountable if I was in your seat. That's your job.
Okay, give me the information and I will call your supplier and look at the price and see what he tells me. And we'll go from there.
Okay, anything else on that? Let's move on down to new business. Ordinance Resolution one 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 seven. I say, I need a motion.
You gonna read the resolution, Ray?
You want me to read it? Okay.
Is this from the LOCs or whatever?
Yes, this is the, this is done annually to receive our share of state revenue. You know, cigarette tax, actually marijuana's taxed through this process now, the state revenue sharing portion of that.
Have we talked about this already?
They were both mentioned in your guys' budget discussions, if you look at your budget background, yeah. Those were that component, so they were both discussed in your first budget committee meeting and then in the public meeting, you guys adopted the budget, so.
Uh, Resolution declaring cities' election to receive state revenue. It's Resolution one 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 seven.
I'll make a motion to, um, um, Resolution one 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 seven as written.
One second.
Sure.
Motion made in seconds, on the favor.
Aye.
Okay.
Did Shannon vote?
He's on you.
So this just authorizes you, Michelle, to provide for the funds?
To receive them.
To receive the funds?
Yes.
That's the one that has to be done by Friday or something, right?
Correct.
Okay, move on down, Srock Miss Park.
So, uh, Srock Miss Park price has dropped. It was crazy amount, three hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah, something like that.
And I believe it's now down to a hundred and fifty thousand.
Sure.
At last I looked, so I put it on there because I, I don't know if you guys want to try to buy it or try to find money for it or if you want me to attempt for grant money. Um, I know it is a benefit to the community and many people use the park. Um, and part of our town goals are to increase our green spaces and parks, so, um, I don't, I just thought I'd bring it up for discussion and, and direction if you would like me to go find money for it.
Have you got some thoughts about where you can go to find that money?
I do.
Nope, actually go for it, might look.
I do, um, it may be a while to get it, but it's, there's a lot of funding for projects like this to the new EPA, um, ARCA money that they released last week. So it fits nicely into travel and tourism and, um, outdoor recreation. So if you'd like me to pursue that, I will.
Uh, I for one would like it to do that.
I would too.
Okay.
I know a lot of people, you too.
I was there this morning and said that.
So the council wanted to make a motion on that, as far as, or you guys just wanted to investigate it, kind of my consensus?
Might investigate, see if the county can come up with it.
No, make a motion. Somebody go down.
We don't need to make a motion.
No, if you're just asking for investigation, that's not a, you're not doing anything, you're not committing yourself to anything.
We'll come down to that pretty soon.
So if I can sense.
Alright. Move on down, down full hours. I talked to Colleen and she says usually Friday afternoons is pretty dead in there and I think most of the time the drills have got their stuff all caught up by then and, so the city is working four, four and a half days with.
Union Public Works.
Or Public Works, I should say. And, uh, turn, they can do the same with the office and then when winter times goes back, they go back to full hours. Back to the regular.
I'm fine.
One second, hold on, what did you just say?
Go back to five eight or whatever did you guys work?
In the winter time?
Yeah.
My suggestion before you do that is remember some of those things can sometimes be labor issues, so for.
Yeah, it might be approved by the.
Yeah, exactly, so it's something that's discussed with the union reps first, just to make sure.
Well, it'll have to be publicized anyway till we get one of them.
Well, yeah, but it's gotta be approved by the union before you publicize it.
Actually doesn't, I'm sorry. It actually doesn't. It's already stated in that for Public Works and for the union girls were considered under the Public Works Union. So we are already based into that.
Okay, as long as you guys are good with that, I, I just, I would, I would still, I would still mention it for Brett Jensen, just so that you got, there, I don't have a problem with it, but again, it's just that there's some things you don't have to do, some things are a good idea, just keep the peace.
So double check with the union and then I'm, I'm fine with it.
And then we'll get it publicized and for a couple of weeks and then start. Okay?
I'll let you know next council.
Okay.
I just say one, I just say one thing on that.
Yeah.
Um, as, as you walk around town, you hear a lot of people crying blues, uh, that own businesses, that they, they don't have enough revenue coming in and everything, but as you walk around, there's always a sign up or something that says, I'm at lunch or I'm at this, I tried to get a haircut four times the other day and I went around and they were closed, you know? So I think people really depend on hours to be open, you know? Now, I'm not saying you can't take Friday afternoons off, but I'm just saying, I think people need to have a place to pay bills and stuff like that, okay?
Is there any possibility you can alternate parties or take a Monday morning off, one and one day a year?
Mondays are super packed, it would have to be like a weird day like Wednesday or Thursday.
I kind of agree with Jay that, um, sometimes people just want to get some business done and then they have to come back to the market.
We can alternate through staff where, uh.
On Fridays?
On one, one person could leave early on Friday and then it would just kind of rotate, so one time a month, you get to go home early on Friday. That way we're also provided this Friday afternoon.
I mean, at least you have one person here, you know, that's like if somebody came in to pay their bill at five o'clock or whatever, you know? But it's, it's up to you guys, I mean, I, I'd go either way on it. But I don't like it, Wednesdays on, at school, we used to get it off and people were supposed to stick around to work, they were all gone. Yeah, they were gone, headed out right away, so I mean, that's, that's what happens, so.
Um, it sounds like the best choice is to remain open and then just alternate to the staff.
You got, if you just have, you know, two off, on a Friday afternoon and one on and maybe all one.
We'll just get the staff on.
Okay.
Thank you ma'am, thank you very much.
Okay. You have just one minute here Friday?
Yes, we do.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, it's our district finals and I just, uh, gonna check again about closing off. Getting cones to put off. And or.
For Friday mornings.
Yeah, I mean, just, I mean, it's like I know people are business and in the Mary's Building that kind of parked there, but then if there's, you know, they start coming in by the afternoon and then we just, if we have the cones there, then we just start blocking off as they.
On Friday.
Yeah, Friday afternoon, so because they bring our arthensin.
If I put one cone before you have to drop off cones.
Okay.
I'll, I'll get it, I'll, I'll get some message.
That should be a motion, you guys use weaning street clutter, you guys are authorizing my. What do you have?
Always close among twenty minutes.
Oh, yeah, but usually, it's just probably.
You do have to make a motion, Mark.
I'll make a motion, you close the street by the pool Friday afternoon for the season.
Is it raining?
Yes.
Motion made in seconds, on the favor.
Aye.
Alright.
Alright.
Roll twice from that.
Alright.
That's a great, you important. Yeah.
This, this next one really needs to get addressed and we need to get on this, the speed limit up by the pool. I see them coming out of there from up the canyon, just flying down through there. And I was parked there the other day and a little kid went running out across over there across the street and I was just like, nobody was coming.
Well, just even this evening, it was like just being up there and, and a motorcycle going and then all of a sudden, I mean, he just hit it hard. Right about halfway and it's like, are you kidding me? It's like, yeah.
Well, that, we'll have to talk with the sheriff about that because that's, we're gonna have to start striking people.
It don't, well, you know, we've got those hurdles.
You can do that.
People are, it's been.
Sideways.
Speed limit sign of the canyon.
Yeah.
Aways deal.
We can do a speed limit sign.
Ones that are also, they hit it spread.
Yeah, both ways. Once it are also, they hit it, it's where the stop sign, it's just like, how fast can we go from this?
I think the speed bumps are gonna be way more effective than a sign. People are gonna ignore that sign that if we have speedy bumps, they're gonna have to slow down.
I agree with you.
Especially ATVs on the other side.
That's true.
Like, I'd get them on.
Yeah, and, and guys.
But you could say it twenty miles an hour, but just five and forty people are gonna go.
A two-foot speed bump.
Right, the speed bumps are, speed bumps keep it for, again, obviously make sure you're up by Public Works because speed bumps are one of those things where you don't have to have a deputy sitting up there all the time getting the, getting the physical. And I can actually tell you at lunch today, I was out, we usually, I usually, lunch in the park, there was somebody that right away as they hit the pool, whereas the first part of where the stairs are, they were already at thirty four, forty miles an hour just going up the canyon.
Make sure we check the spec on speed bumps because there is one. And if they're not built to spec and somebody damages their car for driving over them too fast, they can see the town. Does it happen in Ray?
How far up is that town privately drove there? It goes quite a ways, does it?
Yeah, we actually own quite a ways up the canyon.
All the way up to the gun range.
Yeah, according to the definition, because it is quite a bit of a.
Well, then it stops and then it jumps and it's kind of all.
If, if you go up there and see where all the junipers have been cut out along the hillside, that's all town property.
Yep. And on that cross the way up towards the L of Lisbon.
Williams, is the road owned by the town all the way up as well? Okay. Good into that.
It's county maintained though, isn't it?
No.
It's, it's not.
Oh, no, somebody else maintains part of it. We maintain a portion of it. And then the county does some, and then the Stehe Hill does some as well.
So I would just make sure, I think you guys place is on our, our section of it only. That way we're not getting into more jurisdictional.
Well, it should be because speed bumps have to go on the paper.
Right.
I wonder if it'll help cut down the dust there pouring in the pool.
Well, and I walk up behind there and it's like, at least I do, when, I'm glad to say that people, it's like I make myself visible because then it's like all of a sudden, it's like, yeah, I don't worry. And somebody's dumping trash up there, but I'm, I don't know if anybody's seen that. But I'm even, see if I can get the, the non-. So I'm gonna call the county and see if they can get their probation as well. Okay, but yeah, the speed bumps need to be all right as soon as.
You mean, and the don't sure, or just, just throwing it out?
They're just throwing it out over there.
I want to put the speed, we're gonna shift to ten?
Five.
Five?
Two and a half.
Well, if it's gonna be a speed bump. It's what I don't.
Probably fifteen.
Bloody, people don't, don't even slow down for speed bumps.
So you want signage and speed bump?
Absolutely. And probably signage that there are speed bumps that are due to speed.
You have to put that on.
Yep.
Who I believe tried one.
Okay, I'll give them the show. Well, you know.
Speed bump.
Here's your show. Ginger, move on hers. September?
Why don't you put an hour down for that meeting?
I was gonna do an hour.
Ginger said a half, Ginger said a half an hour and this is gonna take longer than that. Right?
Sure.
We have SCOED, we have SCOED and all those other ones here. It's gonna take a while.
Well, yeah, it'll, well, yes, it will. And especially, we will have, I think we'll have a draft map of the, um, TIF boundary for the feasibility study and that will be good for you guys to look at. You'll have comments and questions and all that. Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, anybody got anything else?
Yeah. Well, I'm actually just gonna throw this out there. I noticed that there was a advertisement for the nuisance officer in the paper.
Yeah.
So I think they're pushing forward with that, with, without us. So I just wanted everybody to know that, right? Okay. All right.
Yeah, I figured they were. Anybody has, doesn't have anything else, then we'll go into adjournment meeting at, uh, six thirty three.